I'm Kari Aikens, a member of the Cheyenne League of Women Voters and your moderator for this forum. I thank you for your interest in the primary election in Laramie County. For more than 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that works to help people to be engaged in their government, to be informed and to vote. Our forum is being recorded and will be posted to the Cheyenne League's Facebook and YouTube. We will start by giving each candidate two minutes for an introduction and then go into the questions. I will be rotating the order in which the candidates are given the opportunity to respond throughout the evening. And we'll also do some flash feedback in which each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond to a prompted topic. For those introductory statements, we will start with Dawn, then go to Jess, then Larry and then to Austin. So with that, Mr. Don Hollingshead, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
I appreciate the time here, folks. My name is Donna Hollingshead. I am a Republican candidate for Laramie County Commissioner. I'm born and raised here in Laramie County. My background that makes me a fit candidate for this position includes 27 years in law enforcement with the Laramie County Sheriff's Department. Spent the last 15 in administrative roles where one of the functions I had was to oversee the jail's $14 million budget as a jail captain. I oversaw 80 civilian and sworn staff. I have a background in media relations and public information officer training with the FBI National Academy. I think that is important to be able to use that background to get information out to the community that the commissioners, the things that they do. So it's more transparent and just to let you know everything the commissioners do, that's great. There's a lot of things that, you know, they do behind the scenes that the public doesn't know about, and I want to get that into the forefront. My background in the community includes over 25 years of volunteering with Special Olympics. I have sat on boards for Safe Harbor Children's Advocacy Center, for Ki'kuanas, for special friends, as well as a married of other smaller things throughout the years. I'm also an elder at my church. The reason I am running for Laramie County Commissioner, I have a deep love for this community and after retiring from the Sheriff's Department, I wanted to find a way that I could continue giving back to my community and in a substantial way. And looking at all the things that the commissioners do, I think that would be a great fit for me. I have working relationships with all of the elected officials, city, county and state. The department heads for all of the agencies as well as business leaders and the general public that I think would be a great resource to add on to my ability to make good decisions for the community. I think I'm a very well-rounded candidate and I'm glad to the opportunity again to speak here tonight.
Thank you, Dawn. Next, we'll go to Jess for his two-minute introduction.
Okay, thank you and thank you to the Laramie League of, or the League of Women Voters. My name is Jess Ketchum and I'm running for Laramie County Commissioner. I've been married to my wife Kelly for 20 years. We just celebrated our 20th anniversary. We have two teenage boys and they are sixth generation Laramie County residents. I grew up in Cheyenne and after graduating from East High School, I attended Laramie County Community College. And after two years at LCCC, I transferred to the University of Wyoming where I graduated with a degree in ag business. My great-great-grandfather Benjamin Franklin Ketchum was a trailblazer, which led him to pioneer in the great state of Wyoming. And it wasn't a state at that time, but it was a territory and first deeded homestead here in Laramie County in 1867. My Wyoming roots run deep. My great-grandfather on my mother's side, Jess Boner, whom I'm named after, pioneered in Converse County, which is currently Niobrara County in 1903. I'm currently employed by the State of Wyoming as a state budget administrator for the State Budget Department. I am also finishing my second term as Laramie County Community College trustee. I have served as chairman of the board from 2019 to 2021. During that time, I was part of the board that dealt with the COVID crisis. And that taught me a lot to move forward for where I am now. I've also been a, on the Cheyenne Frontier Days volunteer for the parades committee for 24 years and have been the lead assistant chairman for the last eight years. I look forward to your support. Please vote Jess Ketchum. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Next, let's hear from Larry Millborn with his two-minute introduction.
Thank you, Kari, and thank you, League of Women Voters. My family roots go deep as well in Wyoming. My great-great-great-grandfather, after fighting in the Civil War for the Union Army, was ordered by President Grant to head to Wyoming and be the chief justice of the Supreme Court of the Territory of Wyoming. So that's when we got planted here. I was born and raised in Laramie County and I'm a sixth-generation Wyomingite. And apart from attending the University of Wyoming, I've lived in Laramie County for 61 years. I thoroughly love being a part of this wonderful county. Working for both the government and the private sectors throughout my employment careers has given me a solid understanding of how these enterprises work. I've gained valuable knowledge managing budgets, facilities and hundreds of people over the years while raising a family and living a life that I've cherished and loved very much. I'm a hard-charging worker and I get things done. I'm also a very personable and approachable person that enjoys interacting with practically everyone I meet. These traits are crucial for a Laramie County Commissioner when dealing with people that I will be representing. I've been the president and vice president-elect of the Wyoming Association Affairs and I served six terms for the Arc of Laramie County. What motivated me to run? An overwhelmingly large amount of people told me, you know, Larry, why don't you run? And that encouraged me to run for the commissioners, knowing that I want to continue near, as I'm nearing the end of my employment career, I want to continue serving the people of Laramie County. And I would just appreciate everybody's vote and look forward to this election.
Thank you. And finally, we go to Austin. You have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Thank you so much, Cheyenne League of Women Voters, for this opportunity. My name's Austin Roddemaker and, you know, I like to joke that my roots run deep all the way to 2017. I was a graduate of the US Air Force Academy in 2016 and then was stationed here at F.B. Warren Air Force Base as an active-duty air force officer working as a missile operator. Following my active-duty time, I elected to leave active duty and decided to stay here in Laramie County because I do love this area a lot and wanted, wanted to build my roots in here. Following my time in the Air Force, I became the executive director for the Unaccompanied Students Initiative, which is a nonprofit that works with homeless teenagers that was founded in Cheyenne, but also operated out of Natrona County and Albany County as well. That had me working with a million-dollar budget and working on fundraising, working with community partners and building relationships throughout the county and throughout the state. Following that, I did a short stint as the COO for the LCCC Foundation. And now I currently work as a government relations advisor for Tri-State Generation and Transmission, which provides electricity to the rural co-ops of Wyoming. I also serve part-time in the Wyoming Air National Guard as a squadron commander as well. In my free time, I became involved in the county first when I founded the Cheyenne Youth Lacrosse Club, which is a sports program that works with over 100 youth. And I also serve on the board of Veterans Rock, which is a nonprofit that works with homeless and low-income veterans. I was motivated to run for this position because I believe Laramie County is at a point where it can take a lot of upward movement and mobility. And I would love to use and leverage my abilities and skills to help Laramie County move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now we'll head into our questions. Candidates received a list of questions that were developed by a team of league members. The order responses will rotate through the candidates and each candidate will have 90 seconds for their response. Jess, we will start with you for our first question. And that question is, what techniques would you use to effectively balance the interests of small communities? So we're talking Albin, Burns, Carpenter, Pine Bluffs, and interests of those small communities with Cheyenne. You have 90 seconds, Jess.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, we need to get all the stakeholders in the room from these communities. They, you know, the mayors, their city councils, we need to understand what their issues are first before we can actually go to the floor and the mat and try and figure out what we need. They should have a wish list. We need to determine what that wish list is, make a decision and then implement that decision. Right now, these communities probably need, infrastructure needs that are, you know, from the last six penny sales tax, that's what a lot of these things were put on the ballot to take care of their communities. And I think that's probably where we need to go, go towards first. And then, once those needs are taken care of, look at their wants and put that on the plate as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Now let's go to Dawn. Dawn, what techniques would you use to effectively balance the interests of small communities and Cheyenne?
Well, first and foremost, being out there in the community. My career in law enforcement, I spent numerous years as a rural sergeant out in eastern and western Laramie County. So I'm very familiar with the, the small towns and stuff that make up Laramie County. But being out there, understanding their needs from the community base, not only the stakeholders that are the mayor and the town council and stuff, but the, the people on the street. I have a lot of background in communication. I want to leverage that with getting to know what they need. As Jess stated, six penny taxes are where they get the majority of their infrastructure needs met. So I want to find out what the needs are, find out through the community as well as the, the different stakeholders. And then take that information and put it together with all of the other six penny projects that are of broad range throughout the county and put them on the ballot for the, the community to vote on. So I think just being out there, being accessible, me being retired, I have the time to be able to dedicate to that. I don't have any other draws of my time except for my family. So I want to use that time to good measure to understand their needs and be able to be their representative.
Thank you, Dawn. Now to Austin. What techniques would you use to effectively balance the interests of small communities and Cheyenne?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I, in conversations that I've had in some of those communities already, I know that they at times do feel overshadowed by Cheyenne, which is understandable given that, you know, a majority of the voting base for Laramie County is located in Cheyenne. But that doesn't negate their needs or negate their interests, right? In fact, I think it means that they deserve a little bit extra attention at times and make sure that they are being heard. And I thought that, you know, Dawn and Jess both brought up great points. I think that it's important that, not just to bring the stakeholders into the room, but bring the room to the stakeholders, right? And that means going into the community, that means sitting down with them, that means addressing their needs on an individual community level and then bringing that back to the commission and making sure that those needs, those thoughts, those concerns are all being heard. And it's important that we take that time to ensure that not only are we meeting about their needs, right? But that their needs are being heard during the commission meetings and that we can address all of those while still taking the time to continually go back and, and listen and hear what they have to say. So it's not just on the front end, but it's on the back end. After decisions have been made, you go back to the community and hear what their concerns are or their, their excitement is about once those decisions have been made. And that's just the best way, making sure that they're engaged on the front and back end of decisions.
Thank you. And now to Larry for your response to what techniques you would use to effectively balance the interests of small communities and Cheyenne.
Well, I've always felt everybody deserves equal, equal representation. And those towns of Burns, Pine Bluffs, Albin, Carpenter, they're just as important as Cheyenne, in my view. As a proven way of acquiring the balance between smaller communities and Cheyenne, I will regularly meet with those communities and eat, eat on location and with using some technology like Zoom meetings and conference calls. I'll be bringing the, the government to the people in this way. And I want to know what they want and what their needs are. And that way I'll be able to ascertain a balance of how we can get those projects done and, and meet their needs. I'll prioritize the needs and interests and then I'll determine viable solutions and costs associated with the said solutions and seek out funding opportunities to ultimately determine where the funding will be coming from. I'll work together with my fellow commissioners to bring these issues to fruition. In doing that, with, with all the smaller communities in Laramie County, they will feel that they are equally and balancefully represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Larry, we're going to stick with you for question number two, which has to do with water. Increased population and droughts have resulted in some concerns regarding water shortages. So what do you think the county government should do to ensure adequate water for residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, agriculture, irrigation, all of the above slash etc.?
Sure. I feel that population growth and drought are two different effects on our water resources. With more and more population happening, growth happening in Laramie County, we are demanding more and more water to be extracted from our aquifers. Conversely, where, when we're experiencing periods of drought like we've seen, the recharge of those aquifers are, are not being adequately recharged. This generally is, is a concern for me and I know it's a concern for a lot of people in Laramie County. While there's nothing we can do about the weather and the moisture receive or the lack thereof, responsible, well-mountaged county growth, I think, is a key to ensure that we make and, and conserve that water resource that's vital to all of us. I feel we need to be proactive in this case instead of reactive. I think we need to jump ahead of this, the curve on this. And I think that the government needs to increase the minimum parcel size that we're allowing to quit putting the straws, so to speak, in that aquifer and, and drawing that out. And I think we need to also encourage when we are building those new divisions and stuff and subdivisions and new homes, we need to encourage zero escaping to reduce the water. We need to encourage composting toilets and, you know, encourage and maybe incentivize all these.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Dawn. What do you think the county government should do to ensure adequate water for Laramie County?
Thank you for the question. This is an important one as it's a vital resource in Western United States. This is something I've been following for quite a while now and it's something that I've seen in county commissioners meetings where when subdivisions are being evaluated and voted on, members of the public that are in the area, they have concerns about their water levels being drawn down because of the increased population growth. Now, when those people come to speak, the commissioners retort back to that is talking about what's called the AMAC Study, which is a water study that was done, I found out a little bit later, about 10 years ago. And that basically goes over the entire Laramie County and says what size lots can be developed. Currently in the areas that have the, the best water, you're looking at 5.25 acres as a minimum. And that's to allow for a proper recharge rate, which means that moisture from the atmosphere, whether it's in the form of rain or snow or what have you, goes back down the aquifer and recharges that. Over a period of time as well, I, I noticed that it was a 10-year time span. So I did a little bit of research and I found by talking to the authors of the study that they believe that it's time now for another study. I support that. I think that's a good idea. And for peace of mind for the community as well as our ability to be able to forecast future growth, we need to know what we have as far as resources to be able to manage them effectively. And also in our land use regs, they have things for zero skipping and such that they are asking the developers to start implementing.
Thank you, Dawn. Now to Jess. What do you think county government should do to ensure adequate water?
Thank you for the question. Um, yes, after listening to the mayor at the politics in the park, he explained that we have quite a bit of water. If the Colorado River Pact doesn't have a lawsuit or that we lose the water rights to the Colorado Pact, that's another issue entirely because less than a year ago, the, the Colorado River was almost dry and now it's at peak levels. So I don't know if that's what's going on in aquifer or not. I mean, that, that's what we're here to do and water is very important for the future development of Laramie County and ensuring the stability of the existing infrastructure. I believe, you know, the way to determine this would be to have a discussion with the individuals at the National Center for Atmospheric Research or NCAR, which is the supercomputer. If we could utilize these supercomputers to ascertain what the water levels are in the aquifers year over year, then we, we can do an impact study that is being done to the water tables by the development in Laramie County. And then we'd be able to plan for the future in a more responsible manner by understanding what year over year water is leaving the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, to Austin for his response on what he thinks the county government should do to ensure adequate water for Laramie County.
Yeah, it's a great question. And, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to hearken back a little bit to what Dawn already talked about with the, with the AMIC report. You know, that's current, that's the current governing document, document that the, the commission is working off of and, and rightfully so, right? That's the latest study that we have. That's the latest information that we have. And, and, you know, none of myself especially, right? I'm not a water expert by any stretch of the imagination. So I'm, you know, we're going to look at, at the difference. We're going to look to the experts for that information. However, I, I do agree with Dawn that I do believe it is time that we look at either a new report or revisiting the report and looking at amendments, right? And understanding exactly what our recharge rates are, where we're drawing from, what the Colorado River Compact impact is upon the city versus the county and just get a total water understanding for the entire county and what impact the city has upon that and what impact annexation might have upon that. And just really understand where we need to go as we move forward, right? We can't look to stop growth, you know, Rolling Stone, yeah, there's no moss type deal. The city needs and the county needs to continue growing, but we need to make sure that we don't run ourselves off a water cliff and run ourselves into a situation that nobody wants to be in.
Thank you, Austin. Well, we are going to pause the questions for just a moment in order to do some flash feedback. So each candidate will be given a word or topic to respond to and will have 30 seconds for that response. And to run this flash feedback moment, I'll hand it over to our Zoom master Karen Meister and Rick.
Hello, everyone. The flash feedback is an idea I got from a forum that I saw, oh, several years ago. And so each of you will receive a different term and the term that you receive, you've got 30 seconds, which is one or two sentences, just, you know, off the top of your head, what do you think about it? And I'm going to start with Austin. And Austin, your terms are solar and wind energy. 30, 90, 30 seconds, please.
Solar and wind energy, you know, more probably, probably energy. I kind of stand in line with Governor Gordon. I believe that we need to have an all-of-the-above approach when it comes to energy and that the energy grid, a diversified energy grid is a positive thing for the county.
Thank you. Next, Larry. And Larry, your term is workforce development. 30 seconds.
Well, workforce development to me means that we have to continue to recruit and train and retain workers in our community to support the industries and, and companies that we have.
Thank you. Next is Jess. And Jess, your term is disaster preparedness.
I think of flood mitigation of resources for a rainy day, budgeting for that, just in case something does happen.
Thank you. And Dawn, your last, and your term is court security.
Okay, court security, that's in my wheelhouse. I was the detention captain, which was in charge of all of the court security in the Laramie County governmental complex. So that involves not only just securing the court with the inmates within the courtrooms, but it's also building wide to understand the needs of each of the offices within that building to give them appropriate training so that they have the ability to act correctly in cases of an emergency and just generally making sure that everything flows right within the governmental complex.
Thank you. And back to Kari.
All right, we'll go back into our questions and Austin, we'll start with you for this third question. The question has to do with recognizing the challenges of workforce availability and infrastructure limitations. So what types of companies, industries, businesses would you like to attract to Laramie County? And would the Laramie County workforce need additional training to perform the jobs provided by the companies you hope to attract? You have 90 seconds.
That's a great question. I think off the, right off the bat, right? I think we're, we're primed for, you know, one or two types of industries to just come in where we, we're not super concerned about whether the workforce is ready or not, because we know it's ready. And that's, we're looking at manufacturing and, you know, some form of aerospace manufacturing as well to get a little bit more specific, right? The front range has seen a large growth in the aerospace industry and we're seeing a return of manufacturing back to the United States. I believe that following COVID, we recognized as a country that we had some weaknesses in some of those categories. And so as we work to address those weaknesses with manufacturing, I think, you know, we've seen some of that come to Laramie County already, right there along Camp Stoll Road, and I think we just need to continue that. I also believe that LCCC has done a great job recognizing where we need workforce and is building programs in order to properly train them. You can see that with the creation of the Advanced Manufacturing and Materials Center that they just opened this past April, or I'm sorry, two Aprils ago. And, you know, that's, it's constantly pumping out people that are prepared and ready to work in those types of environments. And so the industry needs to work hand-in-hand with the education so that way our workforce is prepared for whatever comes down the pipe.
Thank you, Austin. Next, we'll go to Jess. What types of companies or businesses would you like to attract to Laramie County? And would the Laramie County workforce need additional training were they to actually come to Laramie County?
Yeah, well, first off, we're already doing this as a, as a Laramie County trustee. We've implemented quite a few things to work around what the workforce has needed. When we're doing our outreach through the community, we've heard many things, like Austin said, the Advanced Manufacturing, Manufacturing and Materials Center, the AMMC, we've, we worked with the commissioners to get that put on the six penny ballot, which was able to be built. And then we've, we're bringing students through and getting them taught and readied for what we believe to be coming is for the Air Force Base. Many jobs, I think it's $40 billion redo of all of the missiles in, the nuclear missiles in Cheyenne. So that right there is going to help. We've also, on our first reading, we have a new ag technology degree that's going to be able to help the new, the agriculture sector and bring that out as well. We brought the Highway Patrol Academy here to LCCC to further broaden that as well for the police officers and the Highway Patrol. So I believe if I can take that experience and bring it to the commission, we can still work on all these jobs that are already coming into the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Now we'll go to Dawn for what businesses you would like to attract to Laramie County and if Laramie County has the workforce for it.
Sure. I would also like to see more manufacturing companies come in, but ones that are less dependent on large power requirements or water requirements, ones that will help us balance our need to protect our natural resources. We all already have a lot of the, the big tech companies coming in, the data centers and all that. But more manufacturing, it would allow a segment of the population that may not have the, the skills necessary to work in the higher-level technology industries, to, to work in an environment where they can earn a living too and give back. to, to work in an environment where they can earn a living too and, uh, give back to the community and promote more taxes and things like that to pay for the additional resources that we need as a community to grow. So I think it's a broad diverse piece that we need to look at for, um, the growth of Laramie County and, and manufacturing is a big part of that. As far as training goes, um, my other candidate friends here, they outlined it pretty well what LCCC has in store. And LCCC is doing a great job and through the six penny, yes, we have gotten things done to increase the availability or ability to the, for the college to be able to run these programs. I've also done a bit of research on this as well. Gillette is also, their college is running a shorter term turnaround, uh, tech, uh, training. I think we need to look at an all, uh, above approach on what we can offer for training for the new workforce that's coming in.
Thank you, Don. And last now to Larry, what, uh, would you like to attract to Laramie County as far as industries? And would the Laramie work, County workforce need additional training?
Yeah, and, and, and I kind of, the other, uh, commissioner candidates have mentioned the, the industry, the, the manufacturing. I'm also, um, all about tourism. Tourism is the number two, uh, industry in the state of Wyoming and with our nation's volatility of what we're gonna have for our, our mineral and, um, resources and mineral production. I'd like to establish, um, a strong tourism uh, based, uh, businesses here in Laramie County. I work at the Laramie County Event Center and, and operate and maintain the Laramie County Fairgrounds. And we built a wonderful facility out there. It's being used now and Visit Cheyenne has hosted eight events in two thousand twenty-three that generated over a million dollars of economic impact for our community. I'd like to see that and, and expand on that. And yeah, um, LCCC is a fabulous, I've worked at LCCC and saw some of those programs getting, uh, started and I would definitely, um, know that we would be in good hands with the training that they would be able to get our workforce in, uh, good order for our companies that we recruit to Laramie County.
Thank you. Onto question number four and Don, we'll start with you for this one. What do you think is the most pressing infrastructure need in the county? Why do you rank it as the most pressing and how do you think it should be funded? You have ninety seconds.
Thank you. This is an important one to me again, uh, road maintenance is, is huge as well. Coupled with that is your law enforcement, your fire, your ambulance, all of the services that people need when bad things happen. Roads are so important because if your roads aren't in good condition, you have increased, uh, times for response, uh, and that could be life and death, uh, depending on the circumstance. So those were the, the, the top issues I see as far as infrastructure funding them for the road maintenance. The legislature passed legislation that allows for, um, a special, uh, district to be created. Should we go that route, that's something we can look into, uh, to help pay for that. These roads are not only used by law enforcement, but they're used by the general public, whether it's farm, oil and gas or the residents in the area. So we need to make sure that these things are, are well maintained and that we have access to these areas when, uh, the need arises. So those are the, the big ones. The demand for road maintenance, uh, is an issue across the state. That's why the legislature looked at that. The funding streams for that, for road maintenance comes out of the fuel and the gas taxes across the state, but those dynamics haven't been looked at since about the sixties. So I think it's time for the legislature to maybe revisit that and see if there is additional ways to create funding streams through the special districts to, uh, promote the enhancement of the roads for safety.
Thank you, Don. Austin, we'll go to you next. What do you think is the most pressing infrastructure need in Laramie County? Why do you rank it that way and how do you think it should be funded?
I would, uh, agree with what Don said when it comes to roads, but I'm, I would even take it a little bit further and just look at transportation infrastructure as a whole, right? As our community in our county continues to grow, we need to ensure that our roads and just our transportation in general, right, has the carrying capacity to handle the increased population and the increased traffic, the, you know, whatever that comes with the increased population, we need to be able to handle that. And whether that looks at, you know, creating new road opportunities, whether that looks at expanding upon current road situations, whether that involves putting in passenger rail, which I know has been talked about for many years and is always being looked at as well. All of those can be used in a combination, right, to, to address this and ensure that, again, as our community grows, that we are making it easy to move around, we are making it easy to move about because as people and goods move, so does the economy. So these things all play a hand in hand with each other. When it comes to funding it, you know, Don did a pretty good job, uh, talking about the, the tax districts, right? Um, but I also think it, it comes down to looking at, uh, federal grant opportunities where we can look to the government, the federal government for opportunities to apply to increase our accessibility and increase our overall ability to move.
Thank you, Austin. Next to Larry for his thoughts on what is the most pressing infrastructure need in Laramie County? Why you rank it that way and how you think it should be funded?
Well, it seems like, uh, I've picked the, the most popular subject too, uh, road. Roads are the most, uh, concerning infrastructure need that we have. And, um, like the other, uh, candidates mentioned, when you go out and you drive the county roads, you see the, the, uh, maintenance is, uh, is been hard to, uh, keep up on top of. Uh, I feel the problem, it leans a little bit towards our workforce, uh, of equipment operators that are, uh, qualified and trained. Years ago, Caterpillar Company did studies because they, we weren't replenishing the operators like they had. The new trend was to go to the technology. And so I think we have to, uh, actively and aggressively recruit people, train them on that and then retain them, uh, to keep, to keep them there in, uh, the Public Works Department. The funding might even be there because they have had some people retire. And so if we can keep, uh, actively recruiting them and, and getting them hired on and then retain them there. I think we, uh, that would be a great step in maintaining that infrastructure.
Thank you. And now to Jess, what do you think is the most pressing infrastructure need in the county? Why do you rank it as the most pressing and how do you think it should be funded?
Well, I'm gonna echo or else here, but roads, roads and more roads. That's the main infrastructure in, uh, Laramie County. I remember when I was about ten years old and my dad was county commissioner, I'd get a call and somebody'd be yelling at me about a road and I was ten years old and didn't understand. So I guess that was preparing me for today's question. I think, you know, we, we gotta be attentive to the, what the utilization is for each county road and then decide on how to proceed and ma- maintain and improve access for the Laramie County residents. Another infrastructure need would be the Archer Complex. I think we need to set up an advisory committee to come up with a master use plan for the entire complex, which will help out in the future of that. And bringing more people and, um, like Larry did say, um, tourism to Laramie County. To fund these, I would use the bipartisan infrastructure law where there's, uh, two point eight to three billion dollars available to counties to, uh, apply for. Um, working with the, um, grants manager of the county, we'd be able to hopefully secure funding and not use our operating funds to, um, put away or save and use those other bill funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was the final question for this forum, but before we go to closing statements, we're gonna do one more round of flash feedback. So I will hand it over to our Zoom master Karen for flash feedback.
Okay, well, Don, I'm gonna start with you, but this time I have a little tougher word for you. And Don, your word is eminent domain.
Oh, okay. That's a tough one here in Laramie County. We, we want to make sure that if we are looking at taking other people's property for, uh, the resources or the land we need for drainage and stuff, is the only reason we would as county commissioners in the county. We need to make sure that they are fairly compensated at market rates and we need to use it as the last possible option on any taking of somebody's property or land.
Thank you, Don. Next, I'll go to Jess. And Jess, your term is broadband.
Yeah, that's a, um, that definitely brings, uh, technology and resources to all of the individuals and brings communication. It's expensive, but it will, um, teach and educate people. So that's about all I have on that one.
Thank you. And next is Larry. And your turn is collaboration.
Collaboration is a great tool for getting things done. You can move mountains if you collaborate with groups of people. There, it, it's, it's, um, no, uh, it's no, uh, one way of, of, um, getting ideas across, but there's a reason why on Who Wants to be a Millionaire that they had, they asked the audience question because larger groups of people, uh, tend to be right on most, most every subject. So that's what, uh, collaboration means to me.
Thank you. And then Austin, your term is community engagement.
Community engagement is wildly important to me. I, I've worked in and around the community for years and it's the best way to understand what the community needs and help to inform the county commissioners on the best path forward by talking with and working with the community.
Thank you, and back to you, Kari.
Well, thank you. We are gonna move into our final section of this forum. Each candidate will be allowed, uh, two minutes to make a closing statement. And Austin, we are gonna go ahead and start with you. You have two minutes for your closing statement.
I would start again by thanking the Cheyenne League of Women Voters for this opportunity. And I just, I want Laramie County to understand that, you know, I'm, I'm, I, as I mentioned before, I'm not from here originally, but I, I chose to live here because I love this community and I wanna work with this community and I wanna build this community, but build it in a way that, that we protect the Wyoming culture and, and something that Laramie County can embodies. I believe that I bring a lot of strengths. Luckily Larry got the nice flash question there of collaboration, right? But I think, you know, collaboration is something that I've worked with a lot of, right? The best approach to anything is a team approach. And so that couples with community engagement, that couples with working with the Board of County Commissioner, the fellow commissioners. And then it, it just involves being in the community, understanding the external stakeholders and working with all of them to make the best well-rounded decision, right? If I'm the smartest guy in the room, that's a bad day for everybody, right? So we need to make sure that we're bringing in smart, well-informed people and working with them so that way we can provide the best economic and social environment for Laramie County moving forward. I think it's also important that the Board of County Commissioners has a sense of civility to it, right? I think that we've seen at a national level and, and has started creeping into lower levels of government as a situation where civility is no longer held at a premium. And, and I believe that I have the right, uh, personality and the right idea of what that looks like in order to work calmly and what work well with anybody and everybody. And so I just ask that the community on August twentieth at the primary consider Austin Roddemaker for County Commission.
Thank you, Austin. Next, we'll go to Larry for his closing statement. Larry, you have two minutes.
Thank you, and then I'll, uh, thank everybody for, uh, taking the time and doing this, uh, Zoom meeting. It's a, a really interesting, uh, format that I haven't done a lot of these. So I'm having a little flashing thing down on my deal and I'm hoping you guys are hearing me. But, um, I wanna be a county commissioner because I've done, um, I, I'm, I'm at towards the end of my, uh, working career. And I wanna continue serving my county. I feel that the experience that I bring to the table, uh, working, um, with the government and, and the, uh, private sectors, I know the differences and I know what they need, uh, in order to be uh, operating efficiently and, and streamlined and, and I'm a kind of a guy that is a workhorse. I'll roll up my sleeves and get to work. I wanna hear the people's voices and that's what's most important to me is serving with, uh, the understanding that, uh, I'll be able to represent the people, not make decisions of what I think you want. I wanna hear what you think you want. Bring your ideas, bring your solutions or, uh, bring your, uh, with the ideas or the, uh, concerns and, and let me hear your solutions for those. A lot of times people have the solution right there and we'll get to work on, uh, getting that type of thing done. I just, I'm proud of the things that I've accomplished, uh, and moreover, I'm proud of the people that I've brought along with me in, uh, doing the things that I've done. So, um, I please, uh, would like to, uh, thank everybody for the, uh, meeting we had tonight and, um, would appreciate your vote in August. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Jess for your two-minute closing statement.
Right, thanks again, League of Women Voters. My experience with budgets, the legislative process, along with my true Wyoming values, afford me the knowledge to help keep Laramie County moving forward. I believe that my commitment, responsive representation, leadership and genuine interest in serving the public, private and business sectors contribute to a winning strategy for Laramie County. My ideology is to stake a balance between positive growth and economic development that preserves and enhances our unique quality of life and open spaces and allows our children, our brightest and best to seek their futures right here if they so choose. I would appreciate your support, August twentieth. And please vote for Jess Ketchum.
Thank you. And then finally to Don, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, um, about my campaign and what I plan on doing should I be elected as county commissioner for the residents of Laramie County. The position of county commissioner to me is more than just an elected, an elected position. It is my opportunity to continue giving back to the community in a manner that I have done throughout my entire career, whether it is in county government through the sheriff's department or my, um, volunteerism or being on boards. I am a diehard member of this community that is deeply embedded and understands the needs and desires of not only, uh, Cheyenne area Laramie County, but the broader, uh, smaller jurisdictions within Laramie County. It is vitally important to me to be able to be a voice for the communities that I would represent. I am, my tireless work ethic is, uh, can be seen. If you look on Cap City News, some of the questions that were asked of the candidates, if you go to that, you can see some of my stances on things and how much detail that I put into my research and thought on things that affect Laramie County. My civility of to get along with the other commissioners, I'm a people person. And, you know, I ran a jail with, uh, eighty employees plus and I understand how to get people to work together, how to get along. Even the inmates, the inmates getting along, that's something that I'm very good at. And I wanna take my positive mental attitude, my joy for life, and I wanna bring that and give that back to the community in this position. You can go to my website at Hollingsheadforcommissioner.com. We are on Facebook, we are on Instagram. I would appreciate a vote on August twentieth for Laramie County Commissioner and I thank you once again for this great opportunity. And I would, uh, thank the rest of the, uh, prospective commissioners for their time and efforts in putting themselves out there as well for this community that they love as well.
Well, thank you, Don, thank you, Larry, thank you, Jess, thank you, Austin for participating in this voter forum tonight, um, with the Cheyenne League of Women Voters. Um, and voters, thanks to you for your interest in this race for the Laramie County Board of Commissioners. And voters, thanks to you for your interest in this race for the Laramie County Board of Commissioners.